The village council, so regular meetings through state December tenth at seven point three. Uh please stand with the village.
And allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Will call me? Here.
Hold up. Count?
Yeah.
Hi, Jason.
Thank you, Garcia.
Here.
Ross.
Here. Motion to excuse uh council person coming.
Give me a second.
Uh. Yeah. And spoken by Ross, um all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, maybe nay, motion carries. Hey, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda? Um. I guess isn't it planned before?
Yep. Hey, motion by Garcia spoken by Garcia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, maybe nay, motion carries. Number five on the agenda is the presentation, um chief.
Evening, council.
Evening.
Um. I'm proud to do uh the work that Sergeant Ross has done since he made this. Uh the way that he handled domestic assault incidents. One month ago. This is a very reminder of how things are gonna be, it can be more than just calls. And uh how things can change drastically uh when you're on an incident. And how we handle incidents and how we de-escalate it is certainly I'm proud of Sergeant Ross. This is an aggravating review of being like getting in and out of this. Um and October twenty eighth to twenty twenty four approximately three AM Sergeant Ross dispatched to investigate domestic assault involved on the night. On arrival and entry of the residence, Sergeant Ross located victim. On location victim, suspect was then spotted by a whole number of armed men approaching Sergeant Ross and the victim. At this time Sergeant Ross grabbed the victim and ran her to the hospital station. The responsible then exited the back entrance holding up a machete in a threatening manner. Sergeant Ross pulled his service weapon and demanded him to drop the weapon. Listening to his command from Sergeant Ross, the drop came in. The suspect then stabbed the machete into the deck. The suspect was then pulled with a proce and taken to the ground where he was assured to be taken into custody. Sergeant Ross used excellent judgment by getting the victim, handing himself to safety and getting him into a position to de-escalate the dangerous incident. These actions kept the victim and the officer in the suspect from further harm. The actual release of the partner was Sergeant Ross who was not standing in such condition. Right. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
You're gonna make it work tonight, Joe.
Alright, uh the presentational evening was our financial statements and our fiscal year end presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Uh I am Ian, I work for the H B company, one of your lawyers. My name is Ian. It's a pleasure to work with the area people who is still clerked in, it makes you retire and everything.
Almost shut the door, but not quite.
Everybody, everybody, thank you. Um I believe you all have the other kind of videos. So I'm just thinking about kind of our video, the style of everything. If you go to the first page number one is about the things that is the beginning of the order of support. And do a quick version paragraph, um did you see that our opinion is on the money statement at the top? Did it state exactly what the authority of the verdict for a month by the community in the west village to receive? So that's just asking for it. There's not many good things that we can say about information. So that's the main point of the audit. Uh if you got a few more pages to page five, you could be managing this question in an offensive section. Uh the report, we've been planning on highlights. Your assets and deferred outflows to your liability leaving the previous level of the year about one point six million. To equity being developed at twelve point three million, uh of the total of one point six two point one about is unrestricted distribution. Meaning increase or anything whatsoever that you need to. The difference between those twelve and the two is largely because of the capital assets or funds that are restricted for the roads or other restricted areas. Your government funds combined for full fund balance is um about two million, a little bit over that with the decrease of the income by boxing comparison with prior year. Uh that's taking all your government's funds as a whole. Sixty-five percent of your fund balance is unrestricted or unassigned, meaning you can use for anything. The difference between your two million and one point three is all restricted uh funds. You got specifically at one point three million in unassigned fund balance, which equates about forty-four percent of your annual of centers. So if you receive no income at the end of fiscal year, you're about about forty-four percent of the year. So it's a sizable fund jump where you cannot add the fighting for the next year, month, and month, week, or three, to save the money you have to. Your government fund net decrease about one point something. You got a few more pages to page eight. It's gonna be a little bit harder for each of us. Um but if you state enough of the changes in your capital liabilities and your equity, um this changes your year. You have pretty similar over everything, you know, I think it's closing similar. I think the last that's increased a little bit about four hundred thousand um to mainly require recovery of liabilities. Um and I guess the other thing you might care about is your financial liability that decreased a little bit as well. Um you don't know your debt often in accordance with what your schedule is at age of. And if you look at the variable, it shows all your equity now with that one. Page nine, this is the same thing with your income station, your revenue and your time interview. Um again, very similar years to the twenty-three fiscal year. Uh you had an increase in your property taxes about a hundred days, it's just you just took a little uh tax deduction increases. Um and then your safety force is also increased a tad bit due to the um merit on the revenue that you have from the safety. Expenditure is largely the same year over year, about fifty-three increase. But you can see all that boil down to your changing composition. Um definitely your changing composition over government results for these same business sites. Pages fourteen or fifteen, sixteen, seventeen and nineteen are your basis of my statements. The first two uh fifteen, sixteen are exactly what we went over about for the. Just with the twenty-four fiscal years. Um and that's seventeen and nineteen, these are just your government's full funds. So if you compare by your done on your base streets, not specifically these. You're not there, uh pages twenty-one and twenty-two are your water and sewer funds and your infrastructure. Should say in preparation, if you want to see how I teach you this on the following of this year. But it's all always initially just whatever was covered all together, so it should be done. Beyond that, there were the behind me, which is good, and so that's all I can bring to show. Any questions, another meeting?
Um I have one question, is it not a repeated, but we know that it is. Is it appropriate um or should we start to increase our investment in that? Really other go around the ways, what should we be looking for?
Uh that's. That that's a summary of how much of your revenue came from dangers and investment earnings. That's not saying that you got four percent for the whole year, it means four percent under values for interest and investment earnings.
Correct, yeah, I'm just saying one of those layers here and then two other.
You you are all very similar to other um. I I'd be more worried or concerned about the rate of return you're getting as opposed to how much it's taken to your um. Overall evidence, I I care about the rate of return. Are you guys in Michigan last?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, that's what we have represented on the most.
Am I reading this right on page nine, so the box for the change is. End up twelve six, twelve point six, um and one four and then point three was about six. At the bottom of your summary, twelve, four hundred.
Changing that position?
Yeah, so we're at twelve point six million and at twelve point six.
Yeah.
Um now is, I guess as far as all that's concerned, is that a number that we need to be watching, I guess, in terms? Do, where do we want that number to go on that like that one?
It really depends on what fund you're talking about. Uh the business type activities is only your water and sewer fund, so you just wanna make sure that that has enough funding to um. Finance its future improvements or additions to the water and sewer fund, which you need to do a whole study, you need to do a great study in a. There's stuff that say that people sometimes can't see how low your system is and whether you need to improve it, how much that costs. I I can't tell for certain, just somebody's got a new D P five.
Right, is that fairly typical to see a million um million increase over the course of the year?
Uh it's, it depends on what happened during the year. It it's not abnormal.
Oh, yes.
But you're watching sewer fund. As long as that's increasing the finance future, um it it's just operating at basically that zero. For your, it's an apartment essentially where you're bringing a fund to finance the future of the water and sewer fund.
Sure.
The other funds, uh governmental funds like your major global streets. You just wanna make sure that there's enough funding for the future use of um your major global streets, I guess. If there's a new product coming up, you're probably gonna increase your debt. If you're going to move that project is done, you know, the general fund is.
Okay.
The same, the general fund is the one I probably paid the most attention to people. But just wonder why the general fund is so much older than the other funds. Um because I can use for anything, but the general fund can also be used to help pay for the major global street problems. Um activities or the water.
Which we have, we have transferred, so the general fund part of extra mileage as well as some additional general fund dollars to local streets for some of those street projects.
Yeah, so, thank you.
You have a question? Thank you very much, Ian.
Thank you.
See you.
So now the agenda is called to the public, depending on whether I to attend or not, before we go to the podium. Maybe no one will push it, we'll go down to the front and agenda, I got number seven. Um so that they are receiving file items as a motion.
Motion to receive and file consent agenda items. Uh A one and two, um comments and per reports.
Give that a second. Okay, by having to see as second as I can, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Maybe nay, motion carries. Um I'm on motion number seven, be the group item.
Motion um to approve consent agenda items, the um approval minutes for November twelfth, twenty twenty-four, item one. Item two deals in the amount of eight hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-eight cents. And three monthly budget report, credit report and budget amendments.
Support. Motion to have to see as second as I can, a vote call please.
Count?
Yes.
Ross?
It's kind of a percentage, I don't know.
You were the, I guess.
Because you.
Yes.
Count?
Yes. Motion carrying, seven's approved. Uh number eight is unofficially older than us, may the man's text program.
Yeah, and um when we were looking at the water plant shutdown and stuff, there was a little bit of a urgency to get something replaced. And what I had looked at about, it was, it was probably the most expensive one because it came preloaded and it was like a seventy hundred dollar setup fee and all those things. And and further looking at some other ones, there's only a few hundred dollar rating versus three, four, five thousand dollar rating. Um that we had built out ourselves, so if I'm looking at that option, it's maybe, you know, now that we don't have at least a direct pressure of a project pending in front of us. Maybe we wanna investigate a couple of different options, there, what are they used? Uh but they kinda has a pre-populated, populated as you go versus paying for the extra cost of the pre-populated version. Which some people may or may not like that other one when you show up all of a sudden, you're sending enough tax out of the loop. Is this chosen kinds of multiple? But rather than coming back and saying, let's look forward with this one, that's gonna be fifty-one hundred dollars. I wanna look at some of the ones that might be, you know, three hundred dollars and, um, because if we're looking to only use this in the case of notifications are really, really needed. There's a water line break away here, there's a snow emergency here, um a bad accident perhaps that, you know, this is we shut down. So I'm, you know, we're talking handful of texts a year. And so I think maybe taking a different look and trying to build it out over a few months and adding population to opt in. Maybe be better approach, so that's what I'm leaning towards.
Yeah, I like that approach, I think they can probably, a lot of the people who want the informal upfront, I believe, I think are like reached out to have their number added to that. Can we put like a couple, I mean, we could put something on the water bill.
Yeah. They're a little too small out there, right? Uh we have, I missed the agenda right now, I can't remember what it was. We changed it this uh last month. And then we ran it again this month. I can't remember what that one was now. We updated it, it's not very small, but it's not a very large space, we could put a couple sentences on there. Okay, the message, no, I can't remember, because Vicky typed it up over. Trying to put an angle around it, fit it in where I needed it, and I came up with the message was. That was the water bills. But yeah, and and it doesn't stick out, you know, we can't print it in different color or anything, I've got it with that prints. Um but yeah, we we do our website, we're supposed to be in, the sharing of the, you know, viral and stuff like that. I think we'll get it out pretty good, as far as people who wish to be. And I would have, perhaps there's gonna be people outside of our jurisdiction, of course, they might wanna pop into for. Reasons like, because their kids go to school, they wanna help that folks and clothes or something like that.
That's a other question, and you want to keep it just to the village where you don't have to verify your address, or do you want to do the.
Yeah.
I mean, is there an initial expense to something?
It's not a number, because you you're allowed to take twenty-five thousand texts, or if you're setting up a thousand people, that's twenty-five texts a year. If you're setting up to twenty-five thousand people, that's one text a year. So yeah, you you don't wanna necessarily purposely grow beyond our scope. But how how much you wanna limit or prohibit them, I I guess would be a link or.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess would we, would we technically own that user data, so like the the points of contacts and the names, or is that something?
There's different programs, I'll try to add a few weeds on that and see how that works. I don't think, I haven't run across one of them yet that uses it for any other reason than our individual use. I haven't seen anyone that say, oh, and you're part of this, and therefore the people are gonna get junked or spammed or anything else. I haven't seen anyone that likes that, they're all exclusive to your use, because you're paying for it. It's not like, you know, freestyle, you run across things like that. We're looking to pay for this service, you can, don't wanna pay five thousand dollars and then miss thirty-five hundred a year after the setup of that one. For some, we're gonna send out two, three next year. Um it might be better to buy one where you get twenty-five thousand texts and you may not do that for two or three years, but it's five hundred bucks. So there's different ways to do it, um but yeah, they are, everything I've seen so far is, those people, you don't have, you can get sure that they're not gonna be shared, that data not shared to them.
Ready for something? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
For nine new business, um A election of village council officers. Mr. Bill Charles President and President of the town.
Madam President, if I could make a suggestion that we just went through all the new bank's any statements with you and Alice and I know. So if anything does happen to change each night, we'll have to go through all that again. Because, you know, they've been through all the banks and statements. We'll do it. We'll just. If that matters.
Do we read them every year then?
No, every two years, when new, when new members come out.
I'll make the motion to reelect. Reelect, reelect healthy people and as president and Allison Campbell as president of the town for the next two years.
Support.
Thank you, motion made by Ross, ended by Nina Garcia, made a session. I'm really happy to continue to sit around the pool, so.
Thank you, policy.
Sorry. Okay, any further discussion?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Do we need a roll call for that?
We should.
Okay.
Alright, um. Count?
Yeah.
Um Garcia?
Yes.
Um Ross?
Yeah. Yes. Thank you, thank you. Continue on that, I. Um the nine D is the amount of people of. I was just turning on, presenting that. Earlier in the. Earlier in the. How many individuals go through the eye as a candidate?
Support.
Motion by Ross, seconded by Nina Garcia, made a discussion. Hearing none. Roll call please. Yes. Can? Yes. Good to see you.
Yes.
Motion carries. They are approved. Nine C is the twenty-three five proposed village, the platform for meeting schedule. This is standard, I think, of the charter.
Yeah, first one you have to publish, you know, or or adopt schedule that one because they're required, and other ones, you know, that aren't really like the useless and stuff like that, aren't required, but we've put them on. Just make it convenient for people to see them. The CBA, C September first, the high, the uh highly the ones are holidays days. Um the only one that I would probably be worried about would be the zone, or the downtown development story, if their meeting is next week, they're gonna decide and perhaps change that. If they don't wanna meet on, it'll be okay today.
Is that holiday with the other blocks?
Yep. Because. They, I mean, for theirs, we could, you could adopt any schedule that's a bit changing um for theirs. And then ours EBA, I wouldn't worry about that, we, we rarely did any, and the Capitol Commission. They do meet, but. I don't, we don't really have necessarily approved theirs, I guess we are a member, I think the board kind of approves theirs, so we just noted on here, so I don't really approve theirs. We're approving our village council, EBA, um and planning commission, for the most part, the EBA might have all of them. They will choose, uh because I asked about it, Kelly, our EBA director, and they have it on their agenda next week to address. I'm sorry, I can't really. I'm still working there.
I'm sure. Um so you said that we are grouping the EBAs, but they choose to change everything if they want, so, okay. Welcome to the group, the village, um meeting schedule is presented by council, EBA, management, and EBA.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, seconded by Nina Garcia, any discussion? Are not all of them in favor, say aye. Aye, 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 aye. The hot areas are approved. Next is the twenty-three five office calendar. Those are village holidays.
Yes. And and you see there's two of them that are only related to the police department, because they are on Fridays, um we are off on Fridays, we don't recognize those. But the uh police department, which is opposite of open on Fridays, those are way bigger than.
Same holidays as those years.
Yes.
Um being the, two of the holidays are on Fridays, do the offer, our employees and their days then?
Well, the. They would take the day off because it's not a Friday, right? We, our side, we kind of take a position that we're gonna have Fridays off, so if it's on Friday, we're not gonna make it to Thursday. Saturdays and Sundays are across the board, for the police union, um the EBW union in our office. If it's a Saturday or Sunday, we will recognize it on a different day, but we, we amongst ourselves choose not to do that for Fridays, because we're already on Fridays. So, you know, just the four of us, we are very appreciative of already having fifty-two Fridays off, you know, all they have is a call on Friday, we're not thinking Thursday, they can make that for.
No questions?
But for those who are scheduled on Fridays, obviously. Chief, yeah, chief, chief, yeah, chief, chief, and Robin, we're saying any other police topics? Yes, of course they do, and anybody that's on Saturday jerks on a Friday, we're gonna work Monday for a Sunday. We're just saying in our bed on our side that we wanna, not leaning towards the Fridays going away. But we. We're zealous on taking Thursdays.
Motion approved twenty twenty-five office calendar.
Motion made by Nina Garcia, if I can get it to Ross, yeah. Any further discussion? You're not all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Motion carries. Next is the boards by commission appointment. So. At the top of the, especially in front of us, um the zoning board, I believe, um someone already said that one of our PC members must serve on the EBA.
According to our bylaws.
According to our bylaws.
Not, the statute doesn't require, statute of law.
Okay, and then um Tom Schultz did um.
He did.
Agree to.
Yeah, something Monday this week, yes.
And then at the Randall's term, which is fire at the end of the year, and then at this place we do it.
Yes.
That's by the bylaws.
Yes.
And everything else is, difficult on EBA.
Yes.
Assuming Jacob, he won't remain on the EBA.
Sure, yeah, I'll do that.
So. With pleasure. So I will make a motion to um reappoint Jacob Jacob Garcia. Um to the design board of appeals, um for a another three-year term.
Yep, for his, because he's elected, he goes.
Goes to the end of.
His term, I promise, so I, that's, it's set term, it's starting November twenty twenty-fourth, actually November twenty-eighth.
Okay. Before your term?
Yes.
And then um Tom Schultz. To fill. Um the vacant seat will be filled by Randall's on his term, since it was in twenty twenty-four, and that'll be for a three-year term.
Yep.
Okay, motion made by Cook, seconded by Cook, any discussion? Hearing none, um. Sorry, the motion is. Sorry, that's Cook and. Are we supposed to okay on these? All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Aye, aye, aye. Motion carries. Um and then moving down to the planning commission. Um.
Yeah, just the two expiration terms just do it.
Expiring are Leslie Pelak and Justin Mallard, they both agreed to be reappointed, lucky for our planning commission, they both do an incredible job. Um so I made a motion to um reappoint Leslie Pelak and Justin Mallard to additional three-year terms of expiration of their. Shermanic.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, seconded by Nina Garcia, any discussion? You're not all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Anything? Motion carries. Next we have the wishing list of the STEM pad, so. I guess. Usually kind of splits that up right now, um the current delegate for MML, Allison and Jacob's alternate, and then STEM cog with me and it's alternate. If you don't have an interest in being the delegates for STEM cog or MML. You want to, we might wanna have those meetings.
Mo's not here, Mo's not here.
Oh, I just said everything. I repeat, one more question. Um I'll start with something about that, I don't know how long you want to do this. Completely up to if anyone else had an interest, or even. When the convention comes, we always switch.
Anybody can go to the convention, as a delegate, you're the voting representative.
Okay, okay.
Right, so you, anybody can go as a member of MML, which you all are, you can go to train, you can go to the conference, but one is the person that would cast any vote on behalf of the village.
And if I remember correctly, it was a, like fifteen-minute meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So heavy left. But obviously you'd be there to vote, so.
I would make my point, MML, we find a matching one, and if that's where it's called, we could probably make it in some of the local. It was a convention, which was like a cap kind of thing, so.
They moved, wasn't it, Gran Rapids one year?
Yeah, Detroit another year.
They, they do move around a little bit, so.
But I have no objection, okay. I'll just bet you for some, I. Sure. Why don't I get that one, see?
I, I don't mind doing some, I'm sure.
Great.
I think there's only one, like, one or two a year.
Yeah, there's a general meeting, we have a match, Charles, I'm like, that's what's on the chat. Um okay, um then alternate. You wanna stand in alternate for MML, I don't think. Sure, I can turn that one on, okay, go to the, perfect. So for MML, I'll um appoint Kelsey Cook as delegate, Councilman Campbell as alternate. With annual appointment. That's my motion. Um so a motion made by Cook, seconded by Ross, any discussion? You're not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Motion carries. Next for some cog. Um. I'll move to appoint Jacob Garcia as delegate, Ashley Rock as alternate.
My love is for the.
Yep.
Support.
Thank you, motion made by Cook, seconded by Nina Garcia, any question on that? You're not all of them in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Motion carries. Or beautification commission, I mean, I'm wondering if maybe this thing.
It's in our.
For the EBA in some way.
Well, it's in our charter that it exists, right?
Right, it has to exist, but I mean, the EBA is really, plays a large role in beautification.
And we, we did, we talked to the garden club about the, the southern park, about the Indian Park, and they're actively pursuing that, they, they get a really good plan, down in the crew, went strip everything out, did the weak, other barriers and all that stuff, so they can go after that in the spring. So perhaps a way to democratize them as a beautification commission?
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, there are some formalities and this, you have to make it where, and you're supposed to do, like, ten minutes or something like that, at least quarterly. Again, I don't know, I haven't had that conversation with them, but I'd be, maybe work with them a little closer, maybe they do belong to.
Yeah.
Take on a role too, but if not, if there's, believe me, if there's others available or interested, we would wanna try wait for that.
Yeah, maybe um, I can't remember, maybe I'll talk to, you know, about, because we can appoint folks, so beautification commission or. Corporate serving, and that's capacity for the EBA, and then I can wait up.
Yeah, yeah, because you, you guys, you, you do this sprinkling it up, and you do this maybe in the fall or something, you know, you could. You could say, we're doing a beautification commission also. You know, just put, you're wearing two hats that day, you wouldn't do anything really different, other than somebody is the chair, somebody makes some minutes, we all met at the Indian Park, we put mulch in, ten minutes. Uh but, and there's a primary person, three must be related residents, and then.
Joe, if I remember, there is a pleasant line item for that as well.
Yeah, you know, I think a couple years ago, we, I had like a hundred and twenty dollars, it was like a little membership that even, and Kathy Hummel came to me, well, matter of fact, the, we had a couple thousand dollars anyway, but that was a hundred this year. Because that was one thing that the garden club asked me, as well, I think we have, you know, eleven hundred, twelve hundred now, but if you need something more in the spring, give me a list of the plans, it's what you do, I'm sure would be happy to, you know, adjust that if a few hundred bucks would need be.
That's nice, uh comes up some money to help out, so. Uh I don't, I'm not aware of anyone interested in beautification commission at the moment, uh they could certainly kind of post, you know, their, you know, social media posts or something, if they could get some interest. I think it'll be more interesting if they're partnered with an organization like the EBA, there's more structure to beautification type projects, so. That was my idea on how to make drop off the people to these.
Yeah. And.
I would say like, schedule a meeting like ten o'clock on a Tuesday or something.
And that's up to the chair and the group, you know, you could coincide it with their committee meetings and say, you know what, we're, we're having a, what committee does, beautification committee, or no, we do have one in downtown, EBA, E B. Design, maybe design or something like that, and you say, we're gonna take a, a, the planting in the park, or the plants along, twenty-four. Beautification question generally though, scope is outside of the EBA district, so they wouldn't be restricted to the district, where, where your guys are, and your committees are. Um because as you recall, up until COVID, I believe, they'd go around each year and take pictures of homes and, and just photography, take a really nice picture, they would choose winners of. Yeah, well, we haven't really seen much involved, but, you know, seeing lately. Because. I don't remember, because, but. So they.
I was on one on serving. I think it's in, I know up until twenty-three.
Yeah, okay, twenty-two, she was assigned Kathy Hummel, Kathy Hummel was the driving force, right, she was the chair, uh and and Mrs. Royster was her, was her a long time too, they were very adept at doing it, they did our planting in our packs, uh out here in twenty-three, I think. Um. But as you lose a long-time member, it just kind of, I mean, shoot, four of the five is bang within, you know, all the year.
So you think her well, she's a poor. If you're talking about the thing that in terms of the EBA problem, I think it would make sense to have over to the EBA also support us, but I don't think the council person has to be out here, but. Right, yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, no, I don't think, I don't think it's historically had any. Um, council member, not it. Not seen it in the past, I don't know, somebody didn't, but. Not recent history, I don't know.
Are you saying you wanna be a council person at certain times? I don't think you want to be. You see my yard. We can just put that on more time, so there are forty to be done actually now, so. Um Holly and Trill, I don't know that this one, the meetings are during.
Three P M on Wednesdays, yeah, and I, I, yeah, and I'm good, because they changed their bylaws a couple years ago, so I'm, when I am in Ellison or whoever, can't go, and I'm there, and then I sit in, and I vote like a regular member, did they change the bylaws as alternates to allow to do that? So it's working good, whether Ellison or anybody else.
Here's something, I had to go to something different. It's, it's, someone can make it, it's a world hard to make, it's kind of hard.
Yeah, it's three P M. And some of them go to four-thirty. You would think a little, I would go there, but sometimes it do.
Okay.
So. Again.
Is it mom and things? Yeah.
Yeah, and again, whoever's name gets on there, if you can't make it, I can go.
Well, maybe, is it okay to keep it in the, the, okay.
Yeah, I know, once.
Someone.
I know, I watch it twice a year, every now and then it lands, it starts flying up, you're able to go, yeah.
Alright, I'll move to, I'll move to do the, we still have to do the reflect and celebrate, so I'll move to uh reappoint Allison Campbell as member, and I'll move to as alternate for the Holly and Trill Management Council.
For two years, yeah.
The next two years.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, seconded by Nina Garcia, any discussion? You're not all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Anything? Carries. Noda, um so this was um Laura Borger, I don't know that. Um I'm not sure when they meet, do we know?
Four-thirty, um Thursday, I think it is. Which, yeah. Another couple, couple, it's for me too. Now I wonder. I wonder if the, I wonder if it has to be council, I mean, you guys probably have had, because council members have by in here, right?
It doesn't, what about our EBA?
Oh, man.
I don't mean to cheat. It, it doesn't have to be a house. I'm not trying to, but there, ours regularly with the trial and transportation, it doesn't count to be.
Well, if we find out if it has. We'll find out. It may be prohibited from that DD directive.
We get a dark. So that's not a problem with this meeting, I mean, if you're frequent, if you wanna get more information. It's like a, Mo has that, got a little time to be there, so.
I know everybody down there is not representative of, you know, there are some members at large, so.
Okay. Cable Commission. Um.
I think Mo really enjoyed that, and she not, she not up anyway, there is, so um vacant alternate, I don't know, she makes most of them. I think, I think one that she didn't make is she forgot about it, so.
Yeah, let's, I'll move to a reappoint for me, how I want to.
Well, she not expired yet, there's an alternate, there's a vacancy even alternate, but I don't really know how necessary that is.
Does anyone wanna be an alternate for the?
I'll.
Okay, so you know one of the meetings there?
I don't have my shit.
Okay, I think you're okay with it for now.
It's, it's.
Yeah, okay. I'll move to appoint Jacob Jacob Garcia as alternate for the cable commission. Thank you, Jacob, any discussion? Are you not, as a two-year term?
Good.
Um, folks, I'm here at seven nine, four, okay, motion made by Cook, seconded by Ken. I'll move to favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any name? DDA.
DDA.
Jacob, are you, are you okay to judge DDA?
I know you're repaying. So I did just start a new job, um, and I'm going to be very busy, um, coming up soon. I prefer if I couldn't at least take kind of a break from the job a little bit, but if your schedule is too tight, I, I still can serve, um. So you really focus that work for the next six months or so here.
Okay.
Then that's a break.
Okay. Um, so if Jacob remembers that as a new job, and I, I never, it'll be either one of us to go, right, so, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can attend that, so just let me know if you, um, maybe need to, um, I'll start on each one.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. So with that, um, there's a vacancy that, um, we have, um. From the end of the nation, right, that's one, um, I want my Ashley Rock, so that you can see, for the member at large, so Ashley, our current, our current council member here will be in order to add that to DDA, she's worked on that work before and all her grants with. Everything down, um, government grants, et cetera. Support. Um, so Cook motion, head support, any discussion? In that one? This one, something not council? No, since we don't.
Okay, you're saying with everyone else.
Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any name? Motion carries. And then, um, Roy Clark moved out of the district. Um, and we had an application come through from Jay Choi, and he was like, oh, business in and out, um, which is also recognized and then out, which is very amazing, so. At times buying, um, and extremely valuable to the DDA as well, so I spoke to him and he was very excited to serve on the board. Um, I would go to, and your, his application is in front of you, the council budget here, I'll move to appoint Jay Choi to the DDA four-year term, you know, it's going to be the remainder of Roy's term, so the end of twenty twenty six.
Support.
A motion made by Cook, seconded by Negocia. So any discussion or questions come on that one? All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any name? Motion carries. I think that is a full DDA board, sorry, and it translates by all of the current parts of the statute for membership.
Yeah, Mr. Charles and Marie Popworth, in terms of their expires.
They both have terms that expire. I'm gonna leave them on until they tell me that they don't want to do it anymore. There's also.
Whatever should be, like, in that, or you're.
Um.
Or.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I would like to do that, yeah.
Yeah, it's a more question, sure, if we have other applicants that are interested in being on board, would that supersede just, if they could refer, if that put them in contention with the current, do you comment?
Either of them could be considered for one, sure, their, their terms expire, for instance, right, and their terms expire, they could be reappointed or they could appoint new people in those paths.
So I would wonder, maybe we could follow them as we should review the applicants before we make a decision.
Yeah, I didn't know there are other applicants, oh, no, okay.
Yeah. Okay, I wouldn't.
Okay, yeah, I'll just hold on to those, um, other, so, and then Rock and Mary continue to serve until we, or until others are appointed.
Yeah, yeah, for the statute, like I wrote up there, for Roy's Clark too, um, a member can still hold office until the member's accessory is appointed. So even though they may officially expire at the end of this month, they still on, until other actions, they can either reappointed or remember, even if they're wishing to leave, they still are members, until they get someone to replace them.
Okay, thank you. Have a lovely other. Questions, questions regarding that leave? I don't remember any, or anyone on? More of the commission appointments? And I ask is the C D G bids removed or replaced, your doors, so that that's helpful to me.
And we're gonna have to talk on this tonight, I'd like to do it as my memo outlined, um. Couple of things, and I reached out to both people Monday morning for the Open County Compliance Officers, for the C D G program, and one of them bounces back that I would have to leave till the sixteenth. And the other one, I tried to call, I emailed, and no response, and he's basically the head person on this, and, and the things, and we've had discussions with him over the phone the last few weeks about trying to get some of these projects moving forward. The problem with this one is, um, when we pivoted from the slider door here to the swimming door, it was different genders of the bid, so he said, you need to rebid it, I'd already received a bid from the company, and so, okay, well, the bid is in. And then I went and listed it on our mission purchasing program, and before I could even call them to say, hey, by the way, we're gonna have to rebid this, he was on the phone, hey, I see that, do I have to bid on your mission program, I said, yep, you're fine, however, you will need to provide a bid bond. We're gonna require a bid bond, whether it's a bond or a cash check, by the bid, by due date, which is a couple of weeks out, no problem. And then I saw, on our, you can see the number of people that have collected or downloaded these specs, so the bidding, so we've had three or four, five work companies, other that, this reporting agencies, maybe a dozen that downloaded the bid docs. The one company that Barbara Hill calls, called us, said, hey, you want to come out and do some measurements, great, met him out here, now, it was bid out as blowing doors. Well, they're here for measuring me, and they said, no, are you doing steel as well? I know steel is cheaper, if you want to do a bit of coal, we'll see what happens, but I don't know. The day it came, I had received bid bond from the original bidder. Barbara Hill's company showed up, said, here's our bid, I opened it up, it was only for steel doors, so not advertised. That was last Wednesday afternoon, at three o'clock. Thursday, I was off, we received, Monday, we come in, there's our mail, and there's the bid bond check, that was, you know, ten days earlier from our clients. So they bid it, we filed it for, it was due, they bid it with proper specs, but their bid bond showed up after the deadline. The other person showed up on time, but didn't bid it as effect. So. I, I suppose that, that all that information and the bids goes to open accounting compliance, and it's not hurt back. I, I would, I would expect they'll probably word it to the ones who bid it as spec, it was, the bid on that is probably a pretty minor thing, it wasn't here on time, versus someone that bid it completely different than the specs. But I was hoping to hear back by this evening, but I have not. So we'll have it up for next one. And I'm still disappointed, we still only got two bids, I don't know, all the people downloaded them and. They don't bid on them.
Oh, actually, I know. Um. And G, is it, uh, what there's free design and engineering, the whole flip side?
Yep, yep, and you, um, the design is for you, the estimate. Um, on page two, you'll see the preliminary possibility, opinion is about eight hundred fifty-five, it breaks it down to three forty-six, the water main, five oh eight, with the drainage improvement improvements. Um, this is the project we got the M dot category B grant for, which would cover about a percent of rotating, um, so up to about two hundred and thirty thousand to help us cover some of that costs. And Rose proposed then. To do this, we're there, you're looking at the bottom of the third page, under compensation, Rose provided a lump sum of eight hundred sixty-two five to do, um, those follow-up items that were provided, um. Do the design, the engineering plans, bids back, bid award, and all the things that lead up to awarding a bid. Um, we did an additional walk-through today on lawyers, I'm sorry, on Park Street, you know, as, you know, some of the restoration, of course, that project. The contractor really had a hard time, the underground contractor, the paving company, that was the same underground contractor today, they really struggled with that project, of course, and extended way out there. We had some issues with some of the design and the delay about the, the trees and the right-of-way areas, how it's steeper, because the road grades were adjusted for drainage and things like that. So we're, we're trying to impress on, on Row, we understand you have to do certain things, for engineering standards, but to preserve, if you want to, you know, not be so drastic, and, you know. Minimize the impact on the right-of-way and people's ability to maintain those right-of-ways and things like that. We had a couple of issues with some of the drainage structures that ended up, because of gas lines, that weren't as initially located where they're initially, you know, thought to be for, uh, consumers. So we had to move in catch spaces, now they're so close to the sidewalk, you, you set off sidewalk and drop, you know, sixteen inches into a catch space and lit. And so we really had some concerns about those, um. The, the project we're looking at here, mirrors almost identical, one block south, less trees, um, still pretty flat and straight, um, there are some areas where the, the right-of-ways are quite a bit lower. And of course, the designers always want to kind of lower that down, they didn't want push water onto the private property, but it's already been that way, so you start adjusting to fix that problem, there's a down effect. So. Overall, um. The work that they did was okay, the water main work and stuff. That, that's more the contractor doing the work, I'll, I'll, we'll see if they're, I'll be bidding on this next one next year. Um, any thoughts or comments that, that, things I'll, you know, you can leave a little place up. You know, and, and Rudy were out there a lot, they're, they're out there daily, multiple times a day, helping, pointing out, directing, you know, that, because sometimes they know what's on the ground, you know, more than others. Um. And, and their feedback is very valuable, because that's, you can, that's type of smell. But, so, the, the idea is to do this project, initially, we're, we're, we talked about a few weeks, so it'd be nice to do it for the beginning of summer, but, um. I, I think it's probably gonna be like July one, beginning again, the way the design and everything works, and then get the bids out, and we don't want to rush, we want to bid relatively early. I can't remember, there was some issues back with Paul, um, and looking at our timeframes, and it. This will be your July one, so if we aim for July, again, starting in July, or second week of July, should never be a problem for Halloween.
Shouldn't be.
It, it, and it was a problem. Um, it, it shouldn't be, I think more like an eight week project or something like that, not, not sixteen, or whatever it is, it was. It was, it was bad. Um, so we'll probably, that will take us, the school's over, you know, the second week of June, something like that, so we'll wait a couple of weeks before we start, we should be able to have everything done, July, August, you know, by the actual, to, to, probably. You know, even if it's substantially done, you know, there's some restoration to do, doing restoration in first week or two of September's, whole, different than doing the first week of December. Um, so that, that's related to the contractor work, and that's the most design engineering, but some of those things, you know, we, we have some, uh, correction, we want to see Row making the design to make it a little bit easier on the, on the, on the product. Not as much what's in the ground or what's left over and stuff.
It's comparable with beating on again, it's kind of like a lessons learned.
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, and then, we, as ladies, all right, we see things, and they see things, and we don't have a rain problem here, we don't have a problem here, but then they think, well, the standard says this, and you gotta do this, and we understand that, but, you know, we have some unique grounds around here for one, for water isn't a major problem like it is in a lot of areas of the state. Um, so we can get away with a little thing, treatment and standards here and there as far as, uh, flow and stuff.
Joe, is this more a little bit more expensive than we originally thought? I feel like I remember a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar number, I know that we're getting probably like a two hundred thirty K grant, about.
Oh, so you think, the, the estimate, the construction cost?
Yeah.
I don't know, where it's, this, that's still probably, um, that, I, I don't think so, I, I think, so last year, I think we did that bit about, I think it was gonna be around seven fifty, given like eighty, fifty, so this one did come in higher than your estimate. So I think this is adjusted for that reason, if we were comparing it to the, the previous initial construction cost estimate when we started last year, yeah.
When we discussed.
Um, if you recall, our, our apartment now was a hundred and sixty or something below estimates, and, you know, that, that per country project, there was five, six bidders or something like that, and they were low, and they were still a hundred fifty, a hundred thirty-five more than our estimate. So. You know, you try to test the market, and they have a lot of data and projects all around, to kind of pinpoint where these projects are going, and it can still be off.
Thank you.
So overall, I, I have no concerns with going forward or to throw to the design engineering, um, we just have to step off of them for our, you know, our willingness sometimes too, that. We understand the standards, and certain standards you can't, that's right, uh, but certain things like right-of-way area, and whether we want to, how wide is, what's on the edge of the road versus thicker gravel or, or. Um, lighter gravel or, or the seating, all the way to roads, most things that are kind of more of our preferences.
Um, do you have multiple design engineers you can ask for proposals from, or do you find that you think Row is that just because of, you know, our?
Be, 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 it, it, it's kind of like you and your attorney and your accountant, or your auditors, you know? It, it, you hate it, not, you, you want them a long-term relationship, and you build on that, and they have that, the, the, especially if you get someone that's been with you a long time, years ago, it was, it was, it was here for many, many years, and signed a lot of projects, I mean, you walk down, look at some of these projects from the eighties and nineties, they were well. They went away for, with, uh, Joe Young, with, uh, Milwaukee for hours for a number of years, because he had a relationship with them in the previous, right, so, those relationships help, um, you know, we're pretty rough on them at times, we, we don't hold back, and we tell them, no, we've told you, we don't like this, and, you know, you need to correct that. Um, and it's funny, because, you know, Diamond's better presence out there, when they, when they're talking to Row or the contractors, right, and, and Rudy, Rudy's a soft spoken, um, um, cause of less of a shadow, let's say. But Rudy was right on it today with Paul about where we're at, looking at the street, and how we're, we're gonna do things differently on lawyer, and, and it was, it was very clear, very concise. Um, so A, that's, excuse me, that was both, you know, big shoes to fill, and Diamond, Rudy's been on for twenty-six, twenty-seven years too, he knows his stuff, there's a different role for him to fill in his head, you know, those roles change. How's he gonna fill in that role, and, and today was a, was a good, good test of that, if he'd walked it for an hour and a half out there this morning.
I think motion to approve the, um, proposal for design, you get rid of this from Row, or the amount of sixty-two thousand back right now. Or, motion made by Cook, seconded by Negocia, any discussion? Are you not the boss of all of them?
Look, yeah. Um, yeah. Next, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah. And I need to use the water well main to monitor and do some operations.
You can do a couple?
Okay.
So annually, we have our, uh, production wells and our monitoring wells tested and sampled. Um. We have full monitoring wells and pre-production wells. Last few years, we've used Privilege Midwest for this, um, sampling and testing, and we're recommending that we, under, then again this year, for the price to not exceed five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. So they go out on the, um, monitoring wells, the whole field season, and then three, three thousand on that, and then on the, uh, production wells, studio, and the efficiencies of the pumps, and the workers who do the oil changes and, um, packing. Anything that needs to be done in that production of the wells.
The guy tells us how well they're doing when they're ready for overhaul.
Yeah, but it's their efficiency test, really, you know, that's how, you know, how, you know, how your screen is, is performing and how your pumps are wearing. So usually you see, you see over a period of time, like within a eight, ten year period, your efficiencies of your, of your wells, your production wells, apply, and then every ten, fifteen years. And then every ten, fifteen years, we have to. Repair it and upgrade it.
Yeah. They pull the wellhead rid of the ground and stuff.
These are just, these are just, these are just the tests to know if the test results back over with. The contractor that did the work.
Any idea why the, um, it's so different?
No idea.
We don't, yeah, a couple of years ago, we were like, where are these? It's it's the monitoring of the eight balls, the the sampling and monitoring that's their way out of that, and if you separate these out, it's like. Why is one dealing with it for a quarter or what do they do? They're similar companies.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That's what they, this is what they do, it's very well, you know. But on the other hand, when we got the ever well rebuilt a couple of years ago, Northern Well Hall was lost expenses. We do the both, we do the both companies all the years, but I I could, we give the same reports, it's the almost identical form, just a little bit, their, their head is different. It's the exact same.
Does labor, does labor bring out the wells and drop down the sampling? It can't lose weight a couple of years ago, too.
I'm making a motion to contract Privilegio Midwest for the testing of pre-production walls and the annual sampling of the twelve monitoring, monitoring wells for the price not to exceed five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
Supporter.
Motion by Congress, second by Congress, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Do you want? Yeah. Yes. Go. Yes. You can see her.
Yes.
Very much. And so with nine, I propose a resolution twenty four to change about that permit, permit mandatory.
Yep, it's kind of an annual thing, so M dot knows who's officially approved, go under the permit gateway system and apply for and permits. As you know, G D S all gets to do it on fly last week, worked out really well. He doesn't throw things like that, um, diamond that will do them for, they do landing closure for, you know, working on a signee or preparing light poles like they would have to get available. Um, that'll be, that'll be Rudy now, the little learning curve in the system, but this is just to get an updated, they know who's who's officially authorized.
Make motion to adopt, um, the resolution twenty four thirteen as we. Motion by Congress, seconded by Ross, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Um, this too.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Motion carries, resolution passed, second by J, the resolution twenty four eleven for the critical objectives.
I had to help our new server kind of locate our charter. Like, is this a bunch of your, um, minutes, does all these numbers up here, here's where to find them, here's what you're.
I did print everything that you did.
And she didn't run with me.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution twenty, twenty four dash eleven as it's happened. Second, motion by Congress, seconded by Ross, any discussion? Hearing none, um, roll call, please. Um, the resolution still being made. Oh, it's, it's, all of the favors say aye. Aye, anything? Motion carries, that resolution's passed, the nine K, the proposal's in place, they made.
I love the sign that number seven is blank item, I think there's something that Lori mentioned a few months ago, you said, yeah, I think that, and you made a note, I'm like, I don't know. So. I like, there's something out there, I don't know what it was.
Our, our website seems to have a. Regressed.
You have problems with the, with the mobile, with the mobile thing.
Yeah.
Okay. You might look at a MacBook and I don't have, that's right there. But here's an Apple product, here's an Apple, I'm, I'm the same.
Yeah, I look it out online and it's like, it looks like it's for mobile, but that's.
You're not the phone too, man.
And I can't reach that.
Okay.
I don't know why I did that, because it didn't used to be like that.
Yeah, well, you know. Apple and things like that, they.
Why does it got four or three? Do you want to add number seven?
Oh, yeah, so mine is kind of off to the side, it's smaller, but yeah, but I just, I just, when I do them, it seems normal, yeah.
Okay, also, one, you might need to tell Google that when, when they have us. It says forbidden, when you click, using the direct Google link.
I don't talk to Google, so. Um, so, yeah, I I suppose there could be some glitches going on there, maybe, you know, sometimes you have to update your phone for certain things to work again and there always changes and it seems, so not surprised. I I usually deal with it on my desktop. And so I won't, I do get it on my phone though, like on the weekends and check that.
Who does a website?
Revise, well, revise is the one who designed it in the week, it was twenty eighteen when we started, it was the whole, I mean, it's a lot to build a whole new one, right? I will add, all I do is add agendas and notes and things like that, certainly it's like, I put the D D A statute down there, I created that link and certainly like that, I put the public act, uh, the D D A's public act report, report down there a couple of days ago. And I add that and the link to it, stuff. But as far as functionality, movie pages or something like that, no, I'm not capable of that, it's, we have them, sort of like rearranging or. I'm used to it now, with the V L three for fifty first year, so again, it was new.
So, the other thing I noticed, I know the D D A goes, thanks to Canada on page.
Yes.
The D D A can go on over our page, like under board commissions and anywhere else, there's nowhere.
There was something that I guess they, I I know I have a link to it, that's right, but the report underneath the D D A. Uh, but that was maybe of the governments, so I will put in there and I was trying to just change our links on our page because people were calling, it was a circular fast. People were calling and looking for information because they were finding it, they were searching, finding it in the D D A or our old page, it was an old aspect of our page, it used to link to theirs. Well, I tried to get rid of that link and it wasn't allowing me, and I could have probably reached out to the website people and said, there's a way I can just get that off here because they. The D D A domain was downtownoxford.org perhaps, and then when they got the new site, they were calling me, they just instead of re-correcting it, they got to do the link, it would be downtownoxford. That info now, and so. Ours is still, ours is still, the links on our pages, the links on our pages are still pointing to the old one and. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Down here for the board, it's the most I can.
Okay. All right, yeah, um, so I was trying to. Perhaps we could even redirect it down to the D D A or downtownoxford.org, we could probably just get that domain, I think it's still active on our name, just redirect it to the same thing, so that info. It would be a probably a better way to do it.
I don't think, I don't know if you think that, I'm not necessarily something you want to put on just a resolution or not, but, um. Basically, like some kind of public education in some way to explain like the difference between like the various types of D D A and the different, the change of. Um, kind of like food contact, you get those, people have a lot of confusions to.
We get five calls a day, there are people that live over on drain of roads, something like, resort to water, water permit, five calls a day.
Yeah. I don't know how big, but ask, that would be need added, that, just maybe something to start looking into, like, and that could be a part of an appropriate website, it's just like, you know. I don't know if you've anybody anymore, I, I'm conscious of just on our building website, but it's just, you know, it's not a dull.
So on our site, you click it in the home and then there's a dropdown versus government, and then under government, you'll see. Well, yeah, well, I did, you got the council, the planning commissions, whatever, and that's where the tip, if I click on it, downtownoxford. It goes back to the D D A state, I don't remember that.
Wait, where did you, where did you go? Okay, I think this is exactly the question.
Right, right. Well, I, I, yeah, when I'm at home, home, I think there's a dropdown menu, well, when you're on the desktop, it crosses the top.
I see, you have to click government, you can't choose the drop, it's not, D D A cannot have a dropdown under government, you have to click government like.
Right, oh, I have to be up, yeah, because it, it lays out, yeah, it lays out definitely on a desktop, on a desktop, I think they'll. Across the top, they'll click on it, they also show up down in page, you don't necessarily have to drag down to get to it, but what I'd like to do is. Update and release the D D A, I tried that once around, it's a circular fast, and I was running some glitches because I wanted to like disable parts of our website, maybe changing out that or removing that old D D A info. Like, well, maybe we should be better off to, maybe just redirect those links or something. But, but not the D D A.
Yeah, you're on there.
Right.
My only thought was, we're coming to a website, it's a lot of this, you know, social media outreach, it shouldn't be the presentations. But it'd be worth, instead of adding something completely additional. I see Joe being more in a leadership managerial, maybe partner, but for C P F who does internships with, um, the D D A and they're looking for local government places to potentially exploit that option, some of those things.
We think we're taking down any term.
Um. So that was how, initially, when Kimberly brought on, two years ago, the, you know, from work, kind of community intern, and part of the thing was, hey, you know. Maybe one day a week or half a day, we should go over helping game, you know.
That's what really happened.
I have a hard time delegating that out, I'm just gonna sit in for half a day. Um, so I kind of let her just kind of stay over there because they were a little bit deeper busy. Um, because, you know, we want all this, so now you have to take time, a whole day, it's teaching them how to do something that's, they can do in an hour. Um, and you're there for the summer, so like, I didn't mind helping the person or talking to them or, or, like, for me to say, here's, click, click, now do this for me, and just leave it, I was like, ah, I can't do that.
Wasn't it a bar, unless they had it all to put together?
So, yeah, well, ten times more than I do. For various reasons, one is I don't, I don't, um, I don't look at it as the same, but again, their activities are driven by that. Whereas, you know, I I would think of it as more like, say, boring, we're doing, um, hydrofishing. Hydrofishing. I didn't, I missed the, I was, I was not in here, but I didn't catch the first part of what you said, I heard you say something about presentation, but then I heard it in general, I thought you were talking about social media. What presentation have you done on the social media?
Just like, you know, local government, so I mean.
Oh, oh, oh. No, I, okay, so, well, again, I was still on a website, trying to pick up on that, I missed part of that first part of your conversation. Um, as far as like a, like, flow chart, I don't know.
Yeah, I think I'm actually gonna be doing it, I'm gonna be like, I guess, speaker in, at one elementary schools, I'm looking about, maybe I can take the element, I think it doesn't understand at every grade level. Then probably, I think about, I just don't agree with what you're saying, no.
And, you know, I don't bother, they just talk to us about, hey, the new planning commission, it was even a product, but you kind of need to give a little update or refresher or, you know. I did it with the D D A and your statute, uh, back in my college or something like that. Uh, and some of them were like, I've never even saw that, you know, statute, I've never read it, you know, it was maybe given to them, but they haven't read it. Because again, you were asking to come on and volunteer and do this, this, and this, the last thing I do is read some porn statute that's eighteen pages long. But I highlighted it and encapsulated it and put it in bullet items in a, in a two page thing, it was able to go through it and just highlight those things that they should be aware of. So, but, you know, I enjoyed doing that because they need to know, so as you go forward, it's kind of on the same page.
Yeah, do we have that, like, I don't know, whether digital or, people are like, there's a planning mission that's, you know, for like, any.
By my laws, then. Yeah.
You've got to talk with someone, if you want. Yeah. Maybe you already have what you need. Is there anything else in my agenda or do you have? You're always like, anything makes sense.
Yeah. Some days I'm jumping on a hole, I'm sort of laying. I'm not very good at that either. I'd rather do that than social media.
Motion to adopt the best version twenty twenty four dash twelve as presented, nothing.
There you go, nice.
There's that again, that motion. Motion made by Congress, seconded by Ross, any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any night? Here's the resolution back there. Then I know, man, it's gonna be a great use of compensation. So, um, we look at wage changes for our manager and manager, your treasures, new this year, so she's doing here, uh, with her contract, but. Our manager, um, I know this salary currently, I don't know if you get that, um, but this first circle, which increases, since twenty twenty two, we were all, basically cost of living, they were cost of living, so twenty twenty two is five percent, twenty twenty three is five percent. Twenty twenty four is three percent, so I would vote at least three percent for twenty twenty five, so it's gonna be effective January one. So the current salary is ninety one thousand nine thirty six, so three percent would make it nine four thousand six ninety four. Any other thoughts?
You still don't remember, sorry.
Sure, um, so our managers currently operate with a three percent cost of living. I want to see what kinds of thoughts were, that was reasonable, I don't have a lot of living or anywhere. I mean. Two point five, I think it's three, that's, you know, even four, yeah. Um, I'll make that motion in the remarks discussion, maybe one of them. Maybe differently, okay, so motion by Congress, seconded by Ross, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Um, Ross? Yeah. Good evening.
Yes.
Go. Yes. Who cares?
Well, thank you, Council, and if anything comes up with the line seven item, you know, you can always add, um, sometimes, you know, those things come out of the blue and something comes up to your mind, hey, you know, looking at this or what about this, you know, I'm always happy to. You don't have to wait till a meeting to ask questions or find out what's going on on the next street or things like that, um. I'm, I'm happy to do it, then reverse town on to a meeting to do sometimes, sometimes I find it easier just to get something out of the book before the meeting, just because. See it absorbed.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, ten minutes, we're from Minnesota, there are nine eleven public comment, anyone like to speak during the second round of public comment? Seeing one approaching, moving to committee reports, um, no, I don't believe we have any, um. I don't remember where, but, and my commission, capable commission is for rain, it's absent, but, um, my commission, no.
Not really.
Okay. Um, D D A Jacob?
Um, we discussed many of the items already, I know that there was a couple of events as well this month, um, I don't know, did you want to come up and talk about the success of those or anything like that?
Sure.
Good evening, David. Um, since we're back, we have, we have the ladies shopping event and the Tuesday event, um, I would think that that was not a successful event, so we're looking at potentially, if we're to choose to do something like that in twenty twenty five, we have a little, a little strategically around timing. And a little bit more planning, we know to it, um. Um, we just did a lot of feedback from businesses, even despite our, the town staff promoting it, um, then we also had our small business Saturday, which we also remember in state, uh, I think the weather was very, very, very poor that morning for our initiative, um, so after about an hour and a half, I called it, I was freezing, and we located, um, the giveaways indoors, which I think that was much more successful, so I think, well, even twenty twenty five. I think twenty twenty four, we were trying to be very respectful, because that landed on, um, remember today as well, but I think for twenty twenty five, we'll look at doing something a little bit differently, maybe something in the afternoon, or maybe not an initiative, I think, cost-wise, it wasn't necessarily beneficial. Um, in my opinion, I still don't do it through all the numbers, but I don't know if it hits the intent of it, or if it's important to people to downtown and to the shops that day, um, we pushed really hard on, um, online shopping as well, partnering with L C shop, travel leading street, um, we had some new businesses, um, part join into that, which we just heard about at the, the national level, and, um, shared that with the meeting this afternoon, that we had some new businesses, we had some new items, so that was really exciting to get called out in a positive way for that. Um, we also had our student suite stroll, which was a big set, a lot of work, but, um, very, very bold as well, it was very successful, we had over seventeen tickets, um, like a pound and four, um, so it was a wonderful event. Um, and then this Sunday, we had our indoor holiday market, and we have our polar express, so just concludes our winter activity, and I shall, regroup. Um, I don't know if you want, I don't want to know.
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
Oh, I was just, if you're interested from a staffing standpoint, I started doing phone screens for these support position, it's been really interesting, I worked in HR prior to, um, taking a break, and so I've never had this experience before, but a lot of individuals that I've reached out to wanting to get full initial phone screens, and have, for one reason or another, I come back, and I think it's for the opportunity, but I think I'm not proceeding with the, the four or five, which is kind of an interesting, so, um, so we're featured that we do have a good pool of candidates, um, I have an opportunity to really dig into those, unfortunately, just with timing, um, so that's going to be on my agenda over the next four weeks as well. Um, also, just as a note, we have our combination schedule for February fifth, so I know that there'll be, um, the meeting times that we'll want to proceed with the number of year, um, and so that's going to be my primary focus, is reviewing the strategic plan, kind of making changes based on opportunities of staffing within the DDA, and really looking at what we want to focus on from strategic planning standpoint, and also focusing on the accreditation.
Yeah, you hit a problem with work, Ross, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Um, I'll need to show you, uh, we did meet. We met with our lawyer about some, um.
Approaching.
Approaching on the trail.
It was a pretty quick meeting, that wasn't good.
Yeah, I don't think there was hardly anything else on the agenda, other than. Some close sessions.
You've been in close sessions, so I, well.
Thank you. And the DDA, it's not that bad.
Nope.
Um, manager books, different reports, just for.
Um, yeah, well, thanks, council, for your compliments, and, uh, me, and, and your appreciation is, is well received, and I, I like working here, I like everybody here, um, congratulations to the new electeds, that was tough election this year. Um, good to have you back, uh, she has her, her nameplate, she saved it before, it's back. I've yet to complete, uh, these, yeah, um, and, and I just want to say congratulations to Terry and Don, both who well-deserved changes in life, uh, it's been great working with both, who've been the last seven years, I started almost to the day, seven years ago myself, um, and it's been great, you know, it's always sad to see people go, that it worked a while, but I don't think he's going to work well, Rudy's going to work well, so I'm, I'm blessed in that sense, um, and, um, yeah, council's going to be good, Jacob, but I actually got four women to contend with. New one, but that's okay, I think it's going to be great, um, Don and Rudy just finished a, a hiring, a new TPW, because, uh, we've been in anticipation of the shifting realm, as I mentioned to you when you were here for Don's party, Mike Motters, a long time employee, twenty plus year employee, um, didn't get his S three license, and we have now promoted him to a labor two, correct? And so there's going to be some changes there, Rudy's seven in that new role, um, and Mike Motters seven up, then, so we'll have, we have two guys who worked out great, that we heard in August, and another one who's coming around, for the end of the year, first of the year. Um, and one thing I did, I mentioned to you briefly today, um, the TPW does other things without even being asked, when, when the stupid suite stroll came around, there was several places downtown that had not addressed the snow yet, and they just took it upon themselves and, and went and got after it, you know, spent a lot of time with the quad, and pushing and driving, and putting salt in the parking base and stuff, because they knew how important that was, they didn't need to ask, they didn't need direction, they just knew. And that's, that's up to them, and then, gee, you guys out there were so great, uh, they have a lot to deal with as you're helping cross that crossings, a lot of people chatter and back and forth, and so, thank you to you and them, and it was a great idea that you had, that you closed out the bird, um, I think that was a healthy mention, a lot of good feedback on that. I know the TPW was already there, so then parking, they just made it safer, and it's, the flow went better, um, so, good idea.
I just wanted to add, I've got a lot of, uh, people back from businesses as well, the board story as well, they were like, oh, he's the village chief, or the all the turn.
No, that was just for you.
I, thank you, thank you, um, and also for the birding as well, and I, I always give you credit, because people were just telling me, what are you creating of, I can't give credit for it, but, did you like it, or did you not like it?
Wonderful, great. Okay, um, we'll go to our, 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 our.
Well, um, and I just want to thank everybody for your, your warm wishes for my future, and I'll do this for everything that I'm going to be doing over the years. You know, I, I will solve, you know, I really will, so, I don't know, you'll carry it out without me, and I don't think he's going to do a great job, I feel really good about that, because I was worried that you weren't going to be taking care of, man, the duty. But I'm, I'm good with it now, and, uh, yeah, I was trying to stop it, because if I really, um, I, I just.
We'll stop, because we have a nerve too.
Yeah. You're an operator.
Yeah, we have a neck.
You have my number, we do like helping out there, so, thank you so much. I just want to thank you guys, the opportunity, I know the big shoes have felt, um, they're all four of them, really great, welcome to the media, and everything, so, um, I just want to thank everybody for that. Looking forward to it, I'm glad about it.
You look forward to that, being part of the next election.
Yeah.
Um, council comments?
Um, I'm really sad that I first say it, it was, I haven't seen you two our department, and I just don't know how valuable you both are, so, I am looking forward to working with you, but yes, I am, I know all these are big shoes to build, and you will be missed, um, thank you for the reelection, and, um, again, it's, I'm very happy to be back and working with everyone again, so, thank you all.
Thank you. Welcome back, Ashley, and also sad to see you go down, although I know you'll be my neighbor for many more years. I'm excited about that, and Terry, it's thing to you, you will be missed, and, uh, you really helped do a lot here in our community, and we thank you for both of you, actually, so, just things in general, and welcome to our community members, too.
Ashley, welcome back, happy to have you, Don, Terry, you both have done tremendous work, and I know, whether seeing or unseen, everything you've done, it's certainly left an impact, so, thank you.
And, um, just, yeah, I know everything everyone said is exactly the same, um, very excited to have Ashley back on the council, whereas Jake was relaxed, um, congratulations to that, and Terry, well, you know, as I was saying, local government too, is like, you. When people don't know necessarily who you are, it means you're doing a really good job, because you keep things in order, and keep things running, and it's only, you know, helping people, you know, can't flush their toilet, or, you know, don't get, you know, their, um, water bill in time, or, you know, our finances are in a hole, that people don't notice what's going wrong, and so, I kind of look at it all that way, it's like, as long as things are quiet, and people are happy, and they don't necessarily know what we're doing, so it makes sense, I mean, they're very happy, so, I always encourage people to come and, you know, be involved in local government, but I will so much serve people, and smoothly, and that's what all of you have allowed, it's always do, and so, um, I definitely enjoy it as well, and it's, you know, um, a big, big year around here still, so, um, congratulations to Vicki, and we're extremely excited to have you on the team, and, um, you know, just the fact that Terry feels comfortable, you think, that's a lot, that's, uh, very impressive, we're proud of you to be here with us, too, so. Um, yeah, I think that is it, then, if I have any other comments?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. We'll turn at eight thirty, seven. All of the papers say aye?
Aye.